Almighty God, we the representatives of the citizens of the city of Brisbane are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all its people. Lord, we ask that you guide us in the decisions we make today. Amen. Brisbane City Council acknowledges this country and its traditional custodians. We acknowledge and respect the spiritual relationship between traditional custodians and this country, which has inspired language, songs, dances, law and dreaming stories over many thousands of years. We pay our respects to the elders, those who have passed into the dreaming, those here today and those of tomorrow. May we continue to peacefully walk together in gratitude, respect and kindness in caring for this country and one another. Please be seated. I declare the meeting open. Are there any apologies? Lord Mayor.
Madam Chair, before proceeding with my budget presentation, I'd like to point out that a copy of each budget submission for the 2024/25 financial year has been placed in front of each councillor and a full set of documents has been tabled. Well, Madam Chair, on behalf of the 1.3 million residents of Brisbane, I rise to present the 2024/25 budget. This is a budget that keeps Brisbane moving while living within our means. This is a budget that responds to the challenges of today and ensures that Brisbane seizes the opportunities of tomorrow. This is a budget that is based on a clear understanding of the cost of living pressures residents are facing. And this is a budget that continues to prioritise the investment needed so that Brisbane keeps getting better. This is also a public transport focused budget and the budget that will see Brisbane Metro services commence. This is a budget that invests 89% of all expenditure in our suburbs, ensuring Brisbane remains the best place to work, live and relax. And unlike other levels of government, this is a balanced budget, a budget that ensures that council spends only what it can afford. We're doing this so that we don't add unnecessary costs onto residents now or in the future. On the 16th of March, this city's residents overwhelmingly chose to keep Brisbane moving. They chose our united and experienced team with the track record of ensuring that Brisbane gets it better each year. And they rejected a radical and risky Green Labour coalition of chaos. They chose our effective and affordable plan that recognises and acts to address the twin challenges of rising costs of living and near record growth. They rejected the alternative, which was billions of dollars in ill-conceived, unfunded promises that would have driven up the rates and rents of every single Brisbane resident. Today's budget delivers on the commitments that we made to the people of Brisbane. It delivers on our four-point plan to build better roads, tackle traffic congestion, improve public transport with more services to more places more often, and to make Brisbane's lifestyle even better by investing in the parks, playgrounds, sports fields and other facilities that our community needs. But most importantly, it involves meeting the challenges of delivering a balanced budget. Because we know this is the most responsible way that we can take the pressure off Brisbane households. We were also upfront with Brisbane residents that we needed to find savings in our budget amid the ongoing pressure of global inflation. Going into an election with the commitment to tighten the belt, the Brisbane City Council was unconventional, if not unprecedented. Yet we wanted Brisbane residents to know that we were aware of the costs that they were enduring through the rising cost of living and that we believed that the best way to address this is a council with responsible financial management. Our approach certainly contrasted to those opposite who throughout the election made it clear that they thought responsible financial management was a joke. Our response that was all about responsible financial management is also in stark contrast to state and federal governments and the way that they've opted to rack up huge bills to finance big handouts. Handouts which we will all have to pay for down the track. Now, I'd love to be on my feet today announcing a raft of new projects. The next stage of our Bridges for Brisbane programme, the next Bradbury Park or Hanlon Park, but right now that would only place more pressure on rates and rents. And that's why we made the commitment to Brisbane residents that we would manage the city's budget responsibly. Because living within our means means keeping the pressure off the residents of Brisbane, and that's exactly what we're doing with this budget. Households across Brisbane continue to be vigilant and cautious amid ongoing uncertainty about global and domestic economic conditions. The budget I hand down today takes the same approach. Persistent inflation means that residents continue to feel a pinch every time they fill up their trolley, they fill up their car, and the talk just months ago about the reserve bank cutting interest rates has all but disappeared with inflation continuing to be the bugbear of our economy. The federal budget confirmed that national growth is sluggish. And just last week, the national accounts showed that Australia's economy grew by just 0.1% over the first three months of this year. This has prompted warnings that we're teetering on the edge of a recession. And of course, all of this has implications locally. Our housing sector continues to endure price spikes, supply chain problems and critical labour shortages. That's having a big impact on the construction of new homes in Brisbane. The market's inability to build new homes at a price that people can afford to pay is exacerbating the current housing shortage. It's also having a negative impact on the income that council normally receives from building-related activity. This challenge, of course, comes on top of Brisbane's most costly flood and also a global pandemic, both of which delivered major financial blows to the city's budget. Madam Chair, this budget is also framed amidst a disturbing and growing trend of cost shifting from state and federal budgets and governments on to local councils, not just ours but right across the state. These other levels of government already tap into 97 cents out of every single tax dollar paid, leaving just three cents for local government. Yet they are increasingly foisting their responsibilities and problems on to local councils and local communities. In Brisbane, for example, our council has been funding 65% of the cost of delivering childhood vaccinations. The state government has legislated away their responsibility for managing fire ants if it's on council land. Over the past 19 years, the compensation we received for collecting the state's emergency management levy has increased by just 10% in that time, while inflation has been 67% over that same time. The state government has made us responsible for cleaning up suburban meth labs after the police come in and shut them down. The state government has made us responsible for managing infection control, for tattooing, body piercing, and now they've recently thrown in suburban botox clinics. These are just a few examples of many, but it's part of a much bigger challenge and a much bigger trend. Our council and Brisbane residents have long been expected to carry a much larger burden than other councils. We will invest a record 195 million this year alone in subsidising public transport, when in every other local government, this is a state government responsibility wholly and solely. Unlike other councils across the state, many of the major arterial roads in Brisbane are council roads. These roads come with major maintenance and upgrading requirements that in other council areas are all funded by the state government. For example, Old Cleveland Road is a state government responsibility in Redlands, but in Brisbane it's largely a council responsibility, Ipswich Road is the same. Several years ago, the state government even tried to hand us a section of the gateway motorway to maintain. And while the Sydney Harbour Bridge is state-owned and state-funded, the Story Bridge is council-owned and council-funded, despite being originally built by the state government. This is not a recent development, it's part of a long-term challenge that has seen state governments of all colours overlooking Brisbane in favour of pork-barreling the regions. Meanwhile, we're the only council in Australia delivering major congestion busting and city-shaping transport projects. These are projects that would be delivered by state governments everywhere else in Australia, and obviously everywhere else in Queensland too. Brisbane Metro, Kangaroo Point Bridge, Mogal Road upgrade, Lindham Road crossing project, they're all projects that anywhere else would be solely delivered by the state government. Yet when the federal budget was delivered, the Australian government funnelled billions of dollars into covering the rising cost of state government projects, such as road and rail projects, but left council to fend for itself. And the price of projects went up, state government got extra funding from the federal government, there's been zero extra funding for projects like Brisbane Metro, Mogal Road that have a contribution from the federal government. Meanwhile, state and federal revenue has grown by 74% and 65% respectively in the decade to 2022. The state government's land tax alone has increased by 66%, yet grant assistance to local councils has increased by just 12%. And that's over the last decade, when our costs have increased by more than 30%. Just last month, the state local government and housing minister crowed about the renewal of the $100 million fund for SEQ councils to deliver critical infrastructure to help fast-track housing. Yet Brisbane's share was artificially capped, meaning our residents were once again short-changed compared to everyone else in South East Queensland. Councils like ours are increasingly being forced to do more, while our share of the pie gets smaller and smaller. To be clear, I'm always happy for council to do the work when it comes to infrastructure and transport, but we need a fair share of funding, and my team and I will continue to fight for that fair share for Brisbane residents. Despite the immovable challenge of global conditions like inflation and ongoing threats from other levels of government of forcing their problems on to us, this budget delivers for Brisbane residents. It once again delivers the cheapest residential rates for owner-occupiers anywhere in South East Queensland. It delivers the most generous pensioner rebate scheme in Queensland, recognising that our older residents are also those most impacted by rising costs. I can confirm the general rate increase for Brisbane owner-occupiers will be just 3.8%. And that's about $2 per week in total rates. That is an extraordinary result in the current climate, and of course, that follows an increase of just 3.45% last year, which was well below the 5.4% average for all of the other councils in South East Queensland. Today's result is also a stark contrast to Labour's record in City Hall. Their record is delivering four rate increases of more than 6%, which were at times...
Councillors?
...which were at times 21 times the rate of inflation.
One moment please, Lord Mayor. Councillor Cassidy and Councillor Johnston, do not call out while the Lord Mayor is on his feet speaking. That is your first caution. Councillor Johnston? Lord Mayor.
Well, no wonder they're squealing, Madam Chair. Just imagine if a Green Labour coalition of chaos was sitting on this side of the chamber to deliver a budget. We've done the hard work. Madam Chair.
One moment, Lord Mayor. Councillor Massey calling out again, and that's your first caution. And I remind councillors that this applies to the whole meeting which goes over several days. Lord Mayor will be heard in silence.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We've done the hard work to trim council spending by 10% under our sensible savings plan, a plan that we announced proactively before the election, six months out from an election in a way that has never been done before. Without that plan, the rate increase being delivered today would have been double digits. And in fact, without any changes in terms of sensible savings, the rate increase would have been 32.6% today. Rates would have been up by 32.6% if we had not taken strong and decisive action to rebalance the budget. Now, if these numbers sound far-fetched to some, last year, multiple New South Wales councils had to increase their rates by more than 50% in a single year. Just last month, an Adelaide council put forward a rate increase of 14% to bring their budget back to balance. These are not even councils with large capital work programmes or exposure to major project risk. It's clear that regardless of whether councils are large or small, our level of government is under significant financial pressure right across the country. Yet against this background, it's extraordinary that those opposite, even today, even now, continue to oppose sensible savings. On top of their opposition to our sensible savings, they splashed out with a combination of $3.5 billion worth of new big spending promises, promises which they had no explanation on how they would pay for them. If a Labour or Green Lord Mayor was standing here today, and heaven forbid, there would be no doubt in my mind that the people of Brisbane would be facing the largest rate increase in the 99-year history of Brisbane City Council. The impact on Brisbane residents and businesses from reckless spending like that would have been absolutely devastating. And while we take a sensible approach to spending, today's budget also includes a number of cost of living measures that benefit Brisbane residents. We will continue to fund free off-peak travel for seniors, which has saved our residents and seniors more than $14 million since it was first introduced. Our residents can get cash rebates of up to $200 for household composting and food waste recycling equipment. And we will retain our heavily discounted green waste recycling programme through the green bins, which continue to cost less than $1 a week. This budget also confirms the return of the wildly successful $2 summer dips programme. This initiative saved Brisbane residents and a few residents from other councils maybe, almost $2 million last summer. $2 summer dips was a simple and effective way our council could help residents reduce costs while providing some affordable and active fund for all ages. During December, patronage at Brisbane's 22 public pools doubled. That's right, doubled. Just imagine our pool patronage figures if we hadn't had such a wet summer. People took advantage of the discounts, which meant adult entry was reduced from $6.40 down to just $2. For a family of four, the cost fell from $20.15 to just $8. Some of the feedback we received was incredible. Amy from Maruka said the following: "My family and I would like to extend our sincere thank you for providing a summer of $2 pool entry. We had a wonderful holiday and visited the pool nearly every day, sometimes twice a day. Thank you for the other incentives to get outdoor and exercise and enjoy Brisbane." Aaron from Morningside said: "Thank you for sending out the pamphlets in the mail, which tell me about what Brisbane City Council has been up to. I appreciate it, and I think they're very good and contain a lot of useful information. The $2 summer dips programme is an excellent initiative, keep up the good work." Another resident from Sandgate said: "Thank you very sincerely for $2 swims. I go to Sandgate Pool..."
It's Lord Mayor. Councillor Cassidy? Thank you, Councillor Cassidy. That is your second caution.
"I go to Sandgate Pool and the low price meant that I can go three times a week as recommended by my doctor. And I can say without an exaggeration, it has changed my life. Thank you again." With rising living costs still hitting households, we recognise $2 summer dips was an important initiative, which is why we proposed to bring it back, and that's exactly what we have done. Madam Chair, Brisbane is growing, and over the past decade, Brisbane has been the fastest-growing capital city in the country. With our strong economy, incredible climate and reputation for being a clean and safe destination, Brisbane will continue to grow. And in fact, our sustainable growth strategy estimates that Brisbane's population will grow to 1.55 million by 2041 and 1.7 million by 2046. While the Brisbane Economic Development Agency's new State of the City report highlighted that our economy will grow by 68% to $275 billion by 2041. Now, we know this growth is both a challenge but also an incredible opportunity. And that's why it's vital that we invest in our roads and we fight to ensure Brisbane receives its fair share from the state and federal governments. This budget will see us complete the Mogal Road corridor upgrade project, which removes the old Indrapilly roundabout and replaces it with a new intersection and flyover, as well as better safety. Meanwhile, further up in the section of this corridor that is not controlled by the council, the state took one look at the troubled Kenmore roundabout and threw it straight into the two-hard basket. We're getting on with the current stage of Beams Road upgrade, which will help ease congestion through this busy area of Brisbane's north. We're making our roads safer with federally funded black spot projects along James Street in Fortitude Valley, Kestles Road in Salisbury and Winham Road in Tingleapa. We're doing a range of small projects that make a big impact, like new and improved turning lanes in the gap, Sunnybank Hills and Virginia. And we're doing the planning work and design work necessary for the next round of projects along Kelvin Grove and Inogra roads, Cavendish Road, Kitchener and Holesworth streets in Cooperoo and Underwood Road in Eight Mile Plains. We're also delivering on our Safe Schools precinct commitment we made during the recent election. We're initially targeting four areas, Mansfield, Kedron, Indrapilly and Winham Manly. Combine these areas include dozens of different schools. We'll develop detailed plans for each area, which will include things like pedestrian crossings, widening of footpaths, expansion of 40 km/h school zones, curbside drop-off and pick-up zones, and establishing gateways at school zones. These changes won't just benefit students, they'll benefit all of the people moving through the area and reduce road congestion in our suburbs to keep Brisbane moving. Madam Chair, it's also important that we make the most out of our existing road network. I can confirm today that we are launching a global expression of interest process to identify the best and latest traffic management technology. And we want to introduce it here to Brisbane roads. By utilising smart technology, including artificial intelligence, we have a great potential to get our roads and buses operating more efficiently. That's why during the election, we promised at least $15 million to trial new traffic management technology and confirm the best system for rollout further across the network. When new technology was trialled in Birmingham in the UK, it resulted in traffic flow improving by up to 23% in the first year alone. And it's not just about traffic management, it's also an opportunity to introduce priority for buses on key transport corridors. Our plans certainly contrast with those opposite, whose big idea for tackling traffic congestion was to set up a committee. Improving public transport, Madam Chair, is a key priority, and within months, we'll be ready to start operating the very first Brisbane Metro services. Servicing 18 improved stations along dedicated busways, Brisbane Metro will deliver a transport revolution for our city. The project will deliver turn-up-and-go services on modern, accessible, quiet and comfortable fully electric vehicles. The federal government has invested in this project, and from the talks that I've had with Premier Stephen Miles, I know that he also sees this huge potential to expand Brisbane Metro to other areas of the city. In fact, other South East Queensland councils are already considering how Brisbane Metro can be used in their areas as a mass transport solution to ease congestion. This budget also confirms that we're taking the next steps to deliver turn-up-and-go Brisbane Metro services to the north side. We're starting the planning work for a new state-of-the-art metro depot and charging station on the north side. This depot will be pivotal for operating electric metros and zero-emission buses along the state government's northern transit way and proposed busway. Brisbane's north, Madam Chair, is in real need of transport solutions. Our advocacy has already prompted both the state government and the state opposition to commit to our proposal for a new north-side tunnel linking Castledine to Kedron. We're hopeful that the work that we're undertaking now will mean that Brisbane's north can have a below-surface motorway for vehicles, with Gimpy Road being used for Brisbane Metro. This budget also confirms our election commitment to progress discussions with the state government for an eastern metro. Their eastern busway was supposed to go all the way to Kapalaba, but stopped at Cooperoo many years ago and hasn't progressed since. We're going to work with the state government on an eastern metro that will link up Cooperoo to Carandale and on to Kapalaba, stopping at several Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic venues along the way. Madam Chair, this budget also continues council's commitment to public transport and funds the single biggest boost to transport services in decades. Between turn-up-and-go metro services and the introduction of Brisbane's new bus network, our council is leading the way when it comes to getting more services to more places more often. Combining with building better roads, this is how you tackle traffic congestion. This year, council support for public transport services will increase to $195 million. This means that over the last decade, our investment has doubled. That's right, doubled. We know that to successfully tackle traffic congestion, the state government also needs to invest more. While our investment has doubled in the last decade, the state government has kept their investment to inflation. Our contribution to public transport has allowed us to introduce new services like the Blue and Morone City Gliders and make off-peak travel free for our seniors. But it is simply unsustainable for this council to be solely responsible for growing public transport services. We've been in talks with the state government to support more services in Brisbane. Together, we can help convince more people to leave their car or at home and take a bus or a metro. This six-month trial of 50-cent fares tackles affordability, but what we really need is to work together to make our buses more frequent and more reliable. We want the state government to back Brisbane's buses. We want to see funding from the state that will deliver more bus services for Brisbane's growing population. And we want an investment that will lock in world-class transport services for the 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games. If we get the deal that we've proposed to the state government, they will be genuine partners in the biggest boost to Brisbane's bus services in decades. Madam Chair, Brisbane is Australia's lifestyle capital. Our residents know it, Sydney and Melbourne residents have discovered it too, which is why they're moving here in such numbers. Growth is an opportunity but also a challenge, and we can't let Brisbane become a victim of its own success. Our record of planning new lifestyle precincts like Howard Smith Wharves and delivering new parks and playgrounds throughout our suburbs has helped earn Brisbane the mantle of Australia's lifestyle capital. This budget ensures that journey continues. This year, we'll complete the transformation of the Murray Recreation Reserve and progress planning for a new sports park in Polara and Ellen Grove. We'll finish turning Archerfield Wetlands District Park from a wastewater treatment plant to a picturesque parkland as part of the 20-year Oxley Creek Transformation Plan. And we'll progress the improvements to King Fisher Creek Corridor as part of the Norman Creek Master Plan. We'll also begin the Kedron Brook Master Plan, which is an exciting opportunity to take the already popular 110 square kilometre catchment to the next level. We're going to look for opportunities where we can undertake bank stabilisation and habitat planting to create areas where we can return natural water flow. The 20-year Kedron Brook revitalisation vision will deliver a recreational precinct that is loved by locals and is more flood resilient as well. We'll also undertake park and playground upgrades right across Brisbane, including Macarranga Crescent Park in Castledine, Bill Hewitt Reserve in Camp Hill, Glinderman Park in Holland Park and many more. We'll undertake improvement projects to a number of Brisbane's favourite places, including New Farm Park, Mount Cootha and Malkravat Lookouts, as well as Rocks Riverside Park. There's also new and improved dog parks for Tuong, Belbari, Windsor, Greenslopes, Forest Lake and Nudgee Beach. And we'll complete the final year of our Sun Safe Suburban Playgrounds Programme, which aims to ensure every playground in Brisbane has shade cover. In its first two years, this programme will have added shade to 66 playgrounds across Brisbane, and we're aiming to complete another 34 this year. This administration has a proud record of delivering major upgrades to our bayside foreshores. Two decades ago, we kicked off the initial revitalisation programme of the Winham foreshore. It's a part of Brisbane that residents from all over can enjoy. And this year, we've allocated funding to develop a new master plan for the future of Winham, Manly and Lotu foreshores. I know the local community has many ideas on how they would like to see this part of the city improve, and over the coming financial year, we want to hear those ideas as we develop a plan. I know our new councillor for Winham Manly, Alex Givney, has the energy and enthusiasm to work with her community on such a transformational project. This will be in addition to the $1.2 million investment in the children's playground near the Winham waiting pool. We'll also work with the federal government to deliver on their commitment to improve the Brighton foreshore following our community consultation last year. Madam Chair, our 2,180 parks are great places to take the kids to play, to have a picnic or take the dog for some exercise. From tiny pocket parks, parks loved by locals, to destination playgrounds like Bradbury Park, which draws residents from right across Brisbane, our open spaces are important parts of preserving and... and enhancing our city's lifestyle. Wouldn't it be even better if you could grab a coffee at your local park? That's exactly what we're going to do with our coffee carts in parks plan. We're going to undertake a citywide assessment to identify the best locations and time when coffee carts, as well as other mobile food vendors, can cater for local residents at our parks, playgrounds, and dog-off-leash areas. 60 areas have already been identified through the initial assessment, and this is expected to be increased significantly. We'll streamline the approval process for vendors and set up a booking process for approved locations, and we'll make it cheaper for mobile food operators to access this great initiative with a new $450 annual fee. In some of Brisbane's most popular parks, it will mean residents will be able to pick up a coffee from a vendor in the morning and an ice cream in the afternoon. Madam Chair, public safety is vital for maintaining Brisbane's enviable lifestyle. Unfortunately, crime, particularly youth crime, is a growing problem, and we need the state government to step up and do everything it can to address this issue. And while crime is a state issue, there are things that council can do to improve public safety. Our new $1 million Safer Suburbs Grants are targeted directly at Brisbane's sports and community clubs. From the conversations that I've had, I know many of our clubs who have been victim to crime and are very much looking forward to this new programme. Clubs are often targeted for theft and vandalism, and the cost of repairs just adds to the price of participating in grassroots sports. Over the past three years, at least 12 Brisbane clubs have had copper wiring stolen, which leaves them without any lighting on their fields or in the buildings. Under our new Safer Suburbs Grants, clubs on council leased land will be eligible for grants of up to $10,000. This can fund security screens, CCTV cameras, alarm systems, improved locks and patrol services. They'll all be eligible for funding under Lord Mayor's Safer Suburbs Grant Scheme. I can confirm applications will open in the coming months, with funding distributed later on this calendar year. We're also committed to rolling out suburban safety cameras to deter crime and catch criminals in the act of their antisocial behaviour. On top of that, we'll install new and improved lighting across more than dozens of suburbans of locations like bikeways, car parks, dog-off-leash areas, and in open space. Madam Chair, our council has led the way when it comes to striking the balance between the need for short-stay accommodation to meet the demand and the concerns of neighbours and renters. We recognise that this type of accommodation has a role to play when Brisbane is staging a major international event, but we also recognise there are areas where short-stay accommodation is not appropriate. We also recognise that neighbours in apartments and other types of attached dwellings have legitimate concerns. We've already introduced the transitory accommodation rating category to ensure that owners using their properties on the short-term rental market pay their fair share of rates. There are 1,435 properties currently registered in these categories, and today's budget will increase the cost by a further 10%. During last year's budget, I announced the establishment of a 12-month short-stay accommodation task force. The aim was to assess the sector's impact on long-term accommodation availability and find ways to better regulate it where it was allowed. Today, I can confirm the task force finding and recommendations are now complete. It did find that less than 1% of Brisbane homes are being used for temporary accommodation. In many other council areas around the country and around the state, the number is significantly higher than this. But it also found that council currently had limited ability to regulate short-stay accommodation, with the standard of evidence required under state planning laws making it very, very difficult. The task force found that bodies corporate do not have the power to pass bylaws to restrict the use of short-stay accommodation in their buildings. The task force has recommended the introduction of a new local law requiring owners to prove that they have a planning approval in order to be given a licence by council to operate as short-stay accommodation. In addition, they must ensure a property manager is available 24/7 to respond to complaints and also to pay an annual fee as well. It's recommended council advocate for a number of state government reforms. These include legislative changes to allow bodies corporate to pass bylaws prohibiting or restricting short-stay accommodation, each building given the opportunity to have their say on how this works. I can confirm today that our council will be accepting the task force recommendations and will seek approval from the state government for a new local law following consultation. These changes will make it easier for council to prevent properties being used as short-stay accommodation where it is just not appropriate. It also helps us take swifter action against those who are doing the wrong thing. Based on the data obtained from a number of short-stay platforms, it's estimated there are at least 420 homes currently being used for short-stay accommodation in Brisbane's low-density suburbs that would not meet the planning requirements and not be given a licence to operate. This means these homes can be returned, or should be returned, into the long-term rental market. Hundreds of other homes would also have to prove that they can meet the requirements of the new local law. While a large part of regulating short-stay accommodation falls outside the jurisdiction of local governments, I hope that we can help to work with the state government to introduce some sensible changes. This will allow us to strike a better balance for our residents and visitors and provide a model for common sense regulation of this sector, which can be replicated right across the state. Madam Chair, today I can also reveal that we will undertake a citywide audit of house-to-business conversions. Too often, we see examples of homes being bought and then converted to businesses while up the road designated commercial areas have vacant sites. If this practice continues unchecked, there's a risk that it will shrink our housing stock further at a time when we need more housing. It also impacts on suburban shopping strips as well. We will ask council officers to audit homes being used for businesses on busy roads to assess whether they have the proper planning approval. Now, I'm not talking about home-based businesses here, I'm talking about properties that were formerly homes, which are now completely used for a business purpose. You would have seen them out and about, a house that's been converted into a dental surgery, a house that's been converted into a legal practice. No one's living there. These are the businesses we'll be looking into. There are occasions where this is appropriate, but we need to assess the impact of this practice on Brisbane's stock of residential land and housing. Madam Chair, let me now turn to waste, and specifically, household waste. Now, unlike those opposite who attempted to sneak through the election with a secret plan to cut the red-top bin collections to fortnightly, our commitment was that we would keep weekly red-top bin collections. However, just like other councils across Queensland, we're grappling with the challenge of trying to reduce waste to landfill. Grappling with the challenges also of trying to minimise the impact on households from the state government's rising waste levy. A 10% increase in the budget announced yesterday, and also a 10% reduction in the funding that comes to council to offset that levy. Now, we know that Brisbane has a finite amount of landfill space. Since 2022, we've been trialling a fortnightly food waste recycling service in selected areas using the green bins. I can confirm today that the numbers are in, and they are far from the silver bullet solution that some people thought they would be. Firstly, an analysis of the waste collected from the green bins in the trial area found that just 4% of the material collected was actually food waste, like vegetable scraps, just 4%. To put that into context, the average red bin is believed to contain about 23% of food waste. Secondly, the annual cost to council of providing this service to the 13,000 trial homes was $2.3 million. While processing regular green waste costs just $7.80 a tonne, so that's for the regular green waste in the green-top bin, $7.80 a tonne, when you add some food scraps, even if it's 4%, the cost goes up to $150 a tonne, nearly a twenty-fold increase in the cost. So, expanding Brisbane's food waste recycling to all 156,000 households with a green bin would cost an extra $20 million a year overnight. Just imagine if this cost was forced onto all 500,000 Brisbane households, all for a green bin containing just 4% of food scraps. These results demonstrate the unmitigated disaster the opposition's plan would have been to make food waste recycling mandatory for every single Brisbane household. Their proposal would have cost Brisbane ratepayers millions and millions of dollars, and it would have delivered very little in terms of reduced use of landfill and exposure to the state government's landfill levy. As a result of these findings, I can confirm today that we will be pausing Brisbane's food waste recycling trial. It makes no sense to continue this service when it costs so much but delivers so little. Alternatively, our council will be undertaking a detailed investigation into other more effective measures to reduce our landfill. This investigation will consider a number of initiatives, including rolling out universal green waste recycling bins for all standalone homes in Brisbane, deploying green waste recycling bins to suitable apartment buildings, incentivising anaerobic digestion and other technologies for apartment buildings, converting select community composting hubs to advanced community composting hubs with regular council collections, trialling soft plastics in road resurfacing along with glass and tyres, as we're doing at the moment, installing community-based recycling hubs for batteries, CDs, glasses, X-rays, and tablet blister packs at council and council leased facilities like libraries, community facilities, and sporting clubs, and also investing in a waste-to-energy facility for residual waste. In the interim, we'll continue to offer our discounted green bins to Brisbane households. Since we cut the cost to less than a dollar a week last year, there's been more than 16,000 extra households with a green bin just in the last 12 months. All of these additional green bins has helped us collect an additional 4,000 tonnes of green waste that would have otherwise ended up in landfill. And that's a great outcome for much less cost than the food waste recycling pilot. Our budget is a culmination of a lot of hard work by a lot of talented people who are dedicated to a better Brisbane. I want to thank the Deputy Mayor, councillor Christa Adams, the Finance Chair, councillor Fiona Cunningham, as well as our Cabinet Chairs and Councillors. I want to thank Acting CEO Tim Wright, Divisional Manager Anne Lenz, Chief Financial Officer Mark Russell, Sandra Bridgman, Emma McCarthy, and Elizabeth West. I want to thank our finance policy officer, the Dean, as well as the senior staff in my office, Chris, Stephen, Nathan, Michael, Hannah, and Ruth. This is a budget that meets our commitments to Brisbane residents. It meets our commitments to deliver an affordable plan, living within our means, so that we don't force unnecessary costs onto Brisbane households. Those opposite continue to whinge and whine about sensible savings, yet their own election costings showed they would have driven up council spending by double digits with no plan to pay for their policies. On the other hand, our budget is balanced. Our budget is responsible. Our budget helps households with the rising cost of living, while also facing the growing challenges of population growth. This is a budget that once again demonstrates Brisbane residents pay less than other councils, but they get more in return. More investment in their suburbs, more roads and transport, more parks, playgrounds, and lifestyle precincts. This is a budget that ensures that we can grow a better Brisbane tomorrow. Madam Chair, I commend the budget to the chamber.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Can you please move a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that this meeting of council now be adjourned until 9am on Friday, 14th of June, 2024.
It has been moved by the Lord Mayor and seconded by the Deputy Mayor that this meeting of council be adjourned until 9am on Friday, the 14th of June, 2024. All those in favour say aye. Those against, no. The ayes have it. This meeting now stands adjourned until Friday.